Welcome, everybody, and a happy Thanksgiving to all. Of course, we're thrilled that our legislators, as well as the men and women that work in the Capitol, are able to spend Thanksgiving home with their families, having gotten the important work of property tax relief done in this historic special session. Congratulations to our state legislature in getting property tax cuts done in time for to affect people's property taxes for this year. I want to thank the bill sponsors, you'll hear from them in a moment. I'm going to be signing two sets of bills. The first two are the Property Tax Relief Bill. I want to thank Speaker McCluskey, Representative DeGry Kennedy, Senator Fenberg, and Senator Hanson. And I'm going to be signing the appropriation for the Department of Treasury. We have Treasurer Dave Young with us, and I want to thank Representative Leader, Representative Story, Senator Malika, and Senator Hanson. So just again, a little bit of background, we all know where we are and what we're dealing with for property taxes. After the people of our state rejected both the Gallagher and the Prop HH amendments, we have a real-life situation where across the state assessments went up by about 40%. Most Coloradans' income didn't go up by that level, and we need to act now to cut property taxes, which we are. What this bill does, and I'm about to sign, is it includes a property value exemption for every homeowner in our state that reduces the value of your property subject to tax by $55,000. So if you have a $700,000 house, you are only paying taxes on the $645,000 of that value. It also reduces the residential assessment rate from 6.765% to 6.7% for this tax year that we're in. So just what does that mean? For an average homeowner, and this is, again, every taxing district is different, every area of our state is going to be different, but for an average homeowner, if it's about a $500,000 home, many homeowners were facing a property tax bill that would have gone up by about $1,000. But with this actions of this special session, along with tax relief that was passed in '21 and '22, we're saving Coloradans between $400 and $700 of what would have been a $1,000 increase. And so that's why this is so meaningful today. People's home values went up, that's a wonderful thing, but with mortgage interest rates where they are, with the economy where it is, of course, people's incomes hopefully went up. Some people are on a fixed income, but they went up closer to inflation. Maybe they went up 13% over the last two years, but very few people's incomes went up 30 or 40%. So that's why this action is so needed. We're also providing additional support for a really important opportunity at the Department of Treasury that I want to make sure my fellow Coloradans are aware of. You can go to Colorado dot property tax deferral dot com, and you can, in fact, defer property tax increases above 4%. So again, if you're on fixed income, your property tax went up 25%, your income went up 13%, you can defer the increase above 4%, and it's deferred at a very favorable interest rate, much below what a mortgage would be at, a very, very low interest rate. And it's, you know, you can defer until you sell the home, for instance. So I would encourage people who might be struggling out of pocket to really look at Colorado dot property tax deferral dot com and consider that. This bill makes sure the Treasurer's Office has the resources for the increased demand that we expect for people deferring their property taxes with this action. I also want to just talk about how we sort of viewed property taxes, I think most Coloradans do. They're part of the cost of living, they're part of why Colorado's becoming less affordable. Of course, the actions we're taking today can't solve the real affordability crisis we have in housing. For that work, I know the General Assembly will return in January, there's a lot of great ideas on how we can reduce housing costs, remove barriers to new homes, and especially new homes that are $300,000, $400,000 in the entry level. And we're very excited to do that work, but this special session was about one piece that if we didn't act on would actually add to the cost of housing. That's the last thing we want to do, is add to the cost of housing. And so we wanted to make sure that we could provide the property relief if we could. The state legislature really thoughtfully set aside about $200 million to do that, that's used to make sure that our school districts, our fire districts are not harmed by this. And they were able to deploy that, they had to come back now to do it, because of course the final assessments are completed. But again, for the next session in January, and I think our legislators know this, and they're excited to roll up their sleeves and work on this, we have two things we need to work on. One is the long-term property tax solution, and we'll of course be signing a bill convening a bipartisan commission, that'll be, it's not here today for this group, but it'll be delivered to us in the next couple of days. We need solutions that work for the long term. This is one year, and we'll need to talk about what comes next, and of course, we'll do that with the General Assembly next session to save people money on property taxes. And two, we need a more comprehensive solution to reduce housing costs. Again, you can't just say, "Well, we reduced property taxes," and somehow homes are affordable in our state, doesn't work that way. This contributes to the high cost of housing, but it's not the sole cause of it. There are many, many, many other factors, and some of the same legislators who do here and others are very excited to get to work in January to help make sure that we can truly act to reduce the cost of housing. On these two bills, again, I want to thank the sponsors, and I will turn it over to our Senate President, Senator Fenberg.
Well, thank you, thank you, Governor, and thank you all for being here. The last four days have been exhausting, they've been exciting and also incredibly productive. When HH was a discussion and conversation that voters across the state were having, it was obviously a complicated one, it was a confusing one at times, it was a very important one. And it's important that we, as citizens, as governments, local governments, leaders in communities, teachers, school districts, that we have this conversation very openly and intentionally. Because yes, there is a lot of pain out there when you see something like a 40% increase in your property tax bill, it's no question. For some people, they might say, "Yeah, it's worth it, I make enough money, I can afford it, and my property value went up." But for a lot of us, it's shocking, there's sticker shock, right? When you see that your expense has gone up 40%, and as we've talked about, that's not just property owners, that's everybody who in one way or another, their business or their livelihood or just their home is dependent on the real estate industry, and the fluctuations in property tax has a real impact on people's lives. So HH was a long-term approach to this conversation. Voters said no, but that doesn't mean the problem is going away, it doesn't mean after the election that all of a sudden people didn't have really high property taxes, they did. And there wasn't going to be a solution in the short term to provide relief. And that's why the governor pulled us back in, to do something that can provide relief, not forever, not for the long term, not to solve all of the problems, but to say, "Let's do what we can in a couple of days." I wished it was three days, but it was four days. And we got the job done. There's a lot more to do, as the governor said. What I'm most proud of is that we did it in a way that was thoughtful and responsible. The savings are real, as the governor said, we're talking hundreds of dollars for the average homeowner. That's real money for a lot of people that are struggling, for people on fixed incomes, for seniors. It's a big deal for renters as well, to stave off some of the increases that would come from higher property taxes for the landlords. But what I'm most proud of is that we did it in a way that was honest, that was truthful, that was open about, you cut property taxes, there are ramifications down the line. You can't talk about property taxes without talking about schools, without talking about fire districts, without talking about libraries, without talking about our local governments. And that was the conversation we had over the last several days, and I think it was a good one. There are a lot of things we agreed on, there are a lot of things we disagreed on. But at the end of the day, this is real relief, done in a way that doesn't do it on the backs of our future teachers, our future students, because there will be a downturn somewhere in the future. We will need to use our reserves to make sure we get through those headwinds, that's what the reserves are for. We didn't touch the reserves, and I'm proud of that, because our reserves are so critically important to make sure we don't have to reopen the budget stabilization factor down the line. We also didn't touch Tabor surplus to provide these tax cuts. And that was an ongoing conversation, and it's a good one to have. But what I can say definitively is we are providing meaningful relief, we are not touching people's Tabor surplus this year, or the reserves this year. And that's the way to do it, to govern responsibly, to respond to the will of the voters, but still make sure that we're providing solutions to the problems that we see. As the governor said, we are far from solving this problem for the long term. I'm looking forward to the commission getting together and convening and starting to have this conversation, because we, as a legislature, can't do this every year. We need something more sustainable, something to replace the previous laws that have governed us for decades when it comes to property taxes, and I surely hope that we can come together on a bipartisan approach to what that should be in the future. I want to thank the governor and everybody in your office, Governor, for being totally on-call and all hands on deck over these last few days. There's a lot of numbers to crunch and stakeholding and folks to work with to make sure that whatever we did did no harm, provided real relief, and was done responsibly, and I'm confident we did that. I want to thank all the cosponsors and all the collaboration, the counties, the local governments, the fire districts, the fire chiefs, everybody that in one way or other is touched by property taxes, which is all of us. So thank you so much, Governor, thank you, everybody, for your work. I'm looking forward to getting back to our families and having Thanksgiving this week. But thank you so much, and looking forward to the conversation ahead.
There is little that I can add to that, but I want to start by saying this is the season of giving and gratitude, and this last week has been a tremendous amount of work. I am so impressed with how people came together. Huge thanks to leadership in our local governments, our schools, our special districts, people who were willing to engage again about property tax relief. I too am so very proud of what we are delivering today, because it's been a conversation that's been going on for years and years. Under the time crunch and compression of a special session, we were really able to force that conversation forward in a meaningful way. I'm proud of how responsible our leadership is today. Having been a part of the Joint Budget Committee for several years, I know what it took for us to build our reserves up to 15%. And thanks to my colleagues who said, "You know what, we're going to save those dollars, we need to be ready for the next time Colorado faces a true crisis." We didn't use Tabor surplus. I talked with my Republican colleagues about their concerns with the property tax relief package, and that is how we came together, talked with them, and yet unfortunately, they did not support the effort. I am so pleased that today we led, we are delivering a package that will make a real difference for Coloradans in this state, and I do want to extend a couple of personal thank yous. You know, when the governor called me and said, "I'd like to call a special session, we need to provide property tax relief," I agreed, and we talked about everyone in the state who may not own property but is truly challenged in this moment to be able to take care of their families. And he was willing to expand the call so that we could do more for hard-working Coloradans to make sure that everyone is supported when we are in this cost-of-living crisis. I also want to compliment President Fenberg and Senator Hanson. Their leadership over this last year has been tremendous. There's this drumbeat out there that, you know, we haven't been working in a bipartisan way. The conversation about property tax has been going on for years, and it's thanks to their leadership, their willingness to come back to the table after an election a week or two ago, and say, "We still have a responsibility to the people we serve," and I am honored to serve with both of them. Thank you all for being here. I want to thank the members of the House who worked particularly hard these past few days, delivered real property tax relief, and now, the most important thing is that turkey dinner in just a couple of days. It is truly my honor to introduce Senator Hanson.
Well, it is a great honor to do this work with these amazing colleagues, with the administration. We have worked hard over the last few days to deliver for the people of Colorado. Today is also my son's 15th birthday, so this is a bit of a birthday present for him, and I say that both in the little bit of a chuckle, but also in seriousness, because as the president said, we protected K-12 funding. My son, who's 15, has been dealing with a negative factor since the day he walked into his first kindergarten class. That is not the Colorado that we want to have for our kids. And I'm so proud of this work, because we took the resources that we hadn't and used them to their fullest extent to deliver as much property tax relief as we could, but to make sure we don't take a step backward when it comes to K-12 funding. So that's my present for my freshman in high school tonight. We're not going to reintroduce the negative factor for him or any of his classmates. We did this work in a responsible way, as the president said. Meaningful property tax relief, protecting K-12, protecting local districts, particularly fire, hospitals, ambulance districts, those important first responders in our communities, 100% backfill to make sure we're not taking any step back. I'm proud to do this work, we certainly have hard work ahead, there are no easy solutions here. We've been at it for several years, as the speaker said. I was pleased to work in a very bipartisan manner with Senator Rankin on these pieces of legislation. Today, we build on Senate Bill 238, today we build on the legislation we did in 2021 to deliver significant multi-billion-dollar property tax relief that was done in a bipartisan way, and that is my hope for this next session, that is my hope for the commission, it's work that's going to be coming up with legislation the government will sign shortly. We have hard work ahead, but we need to celebrate tonight's significant relief for Colorado and celebrate funding for our schools. Governor, over to you.
Okay, we'll make this law here. It's official, property taxes have been reduced for Colorado. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. And who do we have here from the, who wants to go first on the treasurer? Go ahead.
Everyone. It was a, it was a good session. We expanded, but the governor had said, from past programs, and then we expanded on a program that I cut red tape on to defer property taxes, it was 1284 last session. I took out some of the red tape to make it easier for active military to be able to utilize the program, as well as seniors. And then we'll have a lot of people applying for the program, so we have to give the Treasurer's Office a full-time employee to be able to process. There's nothing more that I think irritates people, is when you walk into a restaurant and there's not enough servers, and you have to wait. But we can't let people wait for property tax, we can't wait for them to be able to defer their properties. So we took out the red tape, we gave the Treasurer's Office a full-time employee to process those claims, so we can just move it on the way. And that's it in a nutshell, thank you. I do want to thank my co-prime, Representative Story, Senator Hanson, and Senator Malika, that's not here, but thank you so much, and thank you for the governor and the leadership in our, the House, the Speaker, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I too am so grateful to have the opportunity to work on this bill with my co-prime, with Representative Leader. The Property Tax Deferral Program is currently in existence, and we have seen in other policies relative to property tax deferral that it really does work for families who may not have the income at the time to pay their property tax. They are faced with that bill, but also with putting fuel in their vehicles to get to work, or paying for medical expenses, or putting food on the table for their families. And having an opportunity to defer that payment allows them to get back on their feet and have, pull together the income that they need to make those payments later. And it actually works in that more property tax is collected when individuals have an opportunity to defer, instead of going into foreclosure. So we know it works, so I'm glad we were able to get this bill across. It's part of a big puzzle of bills that we put together to help with property tax payments, and delighted to be a part of it. Thank you so much to the governor and his support in this realm, and to our House leadership, and to our co-primes in the Senate. It's been a pleasure to work on this bill, and I'm eager to have it signed, thank you very much. And absolutely, huge thanks, huge thanks to the treasurer, and now treasurer, oh, but now instead here comes Senator Hanson to talk with you.
All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, just quickly, I had mentioned my good friend and colleague, Senator Rankin, and I was pleased to do dozens and dozens of bipartisan bills with him over the years, and the program we're talking about here, we signed into law in 2021 through a piece of legislation that I worked on with Bob. So I hope he's listening tonight, I doubt it, but I hope he is, because we really were trying to put something in place back in 2021 that would be ready for a moment like the one we're in right now. And we've seen uptake of this program start to really climb, it's so important that we get this bill done here tonight so that we can, you know, have the service, right, that was mentioned before, and it's in very safe hands with our incredible state treasurer, Dave Young. Dave, to you.
Thank you. Well, and before I jump in, I just want to say, as a former educator, I taught K-12 and Greeley for almost 25 years, and total experience in it as an educator for 35 years. I really appreciate the focus that the legislative leaders and the governor have had on ensuring that we have full funding for K-12 education. More work to be done there, but this is a real positive step in that, in that direction. And, you know, I'm also very sensitive to the fact that we need to actually provide good service in the Treasury. This is something that people count on. I want to make the point that this is actually not the senior homestead exemption program, so that people are very aware, particularly seniors are aware, because there is some confusion on that. This is a deferral, they're not excused from paying the taxes, but there is a deferment, and over time, they can pay that back on a simple interest loan. And so we don't want people going without food, we don't want people going without getting medicine, we don't want people to lose their home because they don't pay their taxes. So this is a safety valve for people, so that they can actually, you know, continue to live their lives and not have to worry about those kinds of events happening to themselves and their families. And so it's a very important program. It was very underutilized for many, many years, and then we've had four bills now in three years, because we are really expanding this program so that people can take use of it. I really appreciate the intention, bipartisan attention to this program to make sure that it works well, and so I'm very pleased that we're signing the bill today, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in making it happen.
Let's do it.
All right.
Let's make it law. Governor, Treasurer.
All right.
It's official, congratulations, congratulations. Our sponsors of HB 231002 and Senate Bill 23003 can join us at the podium, we're going to do them together. Thank you to our sponsors. Along with Property Tax Relief for Every Colorado, I think it's important, not only this season, the holiday season, but throughout the year, to ask ourselves, what are we doing for the Coloradans that need it the most? People working a job and a half, two jobs at minimum wage, supporting a family. And really, that's what this effort is meant to do, very much to complement property tax cuts that, of course, benefit every Coloradoan. But focused on delivering support for the Earned Income Tax Credit, which is a longstanding tax credit in Colorado, this, we are building upon prior funding that basically supports people who work and are low-income, effectively, we call it the Make Work Pay Tax Credit. It helps support hard-working workers in the hourly economy, and has strong, you know, underpinnings and sound economics to potentially increase the workforce, encouraging people to enter the workforce at those lowest levels, and that's something we need now as well. I think that can complement the work to reduce property taxes by making sure those Coloradans that are struggling the most are able to have an even larger decrease in taxes. We've also moved to the type of Tabor refund that was used, I believe, last year as well, again, as part of a package that includes property tax cuts, looking at equalization. As you know, I'm not a fan of this one or the sixth-tier one, I'm not a fan of either, I think that Tabor signifies that taxes are too high and we should cut them, but certainly in any given year, it's very reasonable to kind of figure out the best refund mechanism. And I think, you know, with the property tax release that we are, we believe that we are delivering, this particular refund mechanism with the time we have, you know, is something that is part of that overall package to save people money. And I would also add that I think with the property tax cuts and the approximately $800 that people are coming back, when you combine those two, for most Coloradans, that'll actually cover more than any increase in their property taxes. So we talked about the property tax reductions, you know, that might cut between, you know, 40, 50, 60% of what the increase would be, but then you add to that the Tabor refund, and I actually think that more Coloradans will come out ahead. And so, you know, at the end of the day, there's a lot of interest at balance, and obviously, we're thrilled to even have a surplus, we have a strong economy, that's why we have it, we should cut taxes, but in the meantime, I think that getting this out in a way that helps people is important. And just as the property tax cuts helped Coloradans, these, the Earned Income Tax Credit will help the hardest-working, lowest-income Coloradans and make sure that they have the support they need to put food on their table and pay costs that they have in their families. I will turn it over to Representative Wilford, and then Young on the Earned Income Tax Credit Bill, and then we'll go to Representative Mayby and Representative Dixon on the Tabor refund bill.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here after four really hard days at work that are absolutely delivering results that Coloradans need. I'm delighted to be here as we, Governor Polis signs this bill that will double the Earned Income Tax Credit in Colorado, putting more money back into the pockets of hard-working people and families across the state. Passing policy is a team sport, and so I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to a number of people and organizations today that helped deliver this important policy. First, to you, Governor Polis, for including the opportunity to expand the Earned Income Tax Credit in your call for a special session. When we talk about relief for all Coloradans, we're not just talking about people who own property, we're also talking about people who rent, people who live with their family members, people who live in their cars, people who have children who have debt, but also people who have hopes and dreams about what the future could hold for them and their families. And we know that the Earned Income Tax Credit is a proven tool in our toolboxes to help lift folks out of poverty, so thank you, Governor. To the prime sponsors of this legislation, my colleague Representative Mary Young, and Senator Chris Kolkar and Rhonda Fields, and to my colleagues in the General Assembly, thank you. Thank you for being fully committed to deliver results, including the substantial EITC increase. To the advocates at the Colorado Fiscal Institute, Kathy White, Caroline Nutter, Esther Turcos, Myra Valdez, and the 36 other organizations that came to the table to support this policy, thank you for your work, for your leadership, and for your steadfast commitment to working people and folks across our state. With this bill signing, we will make a difference in today's workforce, as well as the futures of countless families and children throughout our state as we carve a path toward economic stability for all. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to introduce Representative Mary Young.
Thank you all for being here. As you can tell, the Youngs are well-represented in room. I was so excited to be on this bill, and I share my co-prime sponsors gratitude to the governor for including this, because we know Earned Income Tax Credit is a proven way to improve the lives of hard-working people. We have a track record. I've done several other Earned Income Tax Credit bills, and we've seen this, we see positive income outcomes in the areas of health, we see the reduction of food insufficiency, we see an increase in housing stability, and for me, as an educator, we see improved educational outcomes. We also see that an increase in birth weight of children, which leads to better overall outcomes in their lives. We also have that economic infusion. We are getting these dollars from the federal government, those dollars that fly away, and this is a way to capture them and bring them back, and that has such them and bring them back. And that has such a positive effect on our local communities. In the past, we brought in 700, close to 770 million. This impacts over 400,000 Coloradans. And for every dollar that is brought back, given to that person who earns the Income Tax Credit, a dollar fifty to two dollars comes back to the local economy. And we do see a positive impact on work participation, especially for single mothers. I am so excited to be on this bill, as I've said, and I share my gratitude to my colleagues in the House and the Senate, and especially our community partners. I've seen how this bill impacts the entire state. It impacts seniors, people of all ages, people with disabilities. It can be in a community like mine, which has both rural and city aspects, the resort communities all over the state. So thank you, Governor, and I'm looking forward to this bill signing.
It's official. Congratulations to both of you. Well, first off, I would also really like to express my gratitude to the governor for including opportunities to help those who cannot afford to own homes. And this legislation really does that. And this, along with rental assistance, Earned Income Tax Credit, I really do feel like we came together during the special session to save Coloradans across the board money. I also want to express my gratitude to our Senate co-prime sponsors, Nick Henrickson and Janice Marchman, who couldn't be here. Also, shout out to Kathy, Esther, Caroline, Myra from CFI, and Scott Wasserman from Bell Policy Center, also helped us a lot with this legislation. This bill was really important to me because it helps 61% of Coloradans. 61% of Coloradans are going to be better off because we passed this legislation. And those on the lowest income scale are going to see 426 extra dollars in their Tabor refunds. That's meaningful. That means more gas to get to work. That means more food on the table, maybe part of a rent payment. This matters. And, you know, I said time and time again during this legislative session, we have to come back to the table to do more for renters. Renters are seeing increases at 40% as well. And I know we've talked about creative solutions to work together to address the rising cost of rent here in Colorado. And I'm excited to come back and do that work. But for now, this bill helps renters. I also just want to close by recognizing that this bill helps homeowners, senior citizens who bought their homes 10, 20, 30 years ago, when their values are way lower, and now they're on fixed incomes. I have one constituent in my district, Margaret Atencio. Her only income is her Social Security retirement, $1,400 a month. And a significant increase in her property taxes really, really impacts her ability to stay in her home. And the relief we provided through the property tax bill plus this is meaningful for somebody like Margaret. And now I will pass it to my co-prime sponsor, Ruby Dixon.
Thank you all. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I want to echo my co-prime sponsors' thanks for the community partners that are here tonight and those that were not able to make it, to the governor for including this in the call for the special session, and to our co-prime sponsors in the Senate for helping to introduce and pass this legislation, and to all of our colleagues in the General Assembly that were able to get this through. This is extremely important legislation that I am very proud to see being enacted tonight. This is something that makes sure that the Tabor surpluses that we have, the historically huge amounts that we're going to be rebating to Coloradans this year, are going to be distributed equitably and are not massively benefiting the wealthy at the expense of other Coloradans. So this is a way that we can just equalize the whole thing and make it as simple as possible and say, every Coloradoan, every taxpayer, is going to get $800, that they can decide what is the best way to spend that money. And not only is this equitable from that standpoint, but it also makes sure that the work that we are doing, this legislative session, this special session, actually benefits every Coloradoan. Not every Coloradoan owns a home. Not every Coloradoan is eligible for the EITC or for EBT, although these are extremely important bills and very important programs that I want to support. But this is something that we can make sure that there is no one being left behind tonight. So very glad to see it sign into law, and thank you all for being here.
It's official. Congratulations.